This was for the fourth and they went in and looked at the fireworks and they decided to give one big one.
Mm-hmm.
So they spent all their money, got one big one, took it home, Fourth of July, lit it, is it done?
I'll tell you my grandfather, see we were hearing about artillery shells, somebody's letting them up and doing porches here. My grandfather was a teenager right after World War One and he lived in Utah. His cousins and him went and bought what was then called their artillery shell, because it was beside the artillery shell. And they went and blew it off and his uncle's barn.
Be careful, John likes to run in and out.
He said they ran and they ducked down by the barn and they said lucky it ducked down to the barn had holes in it from rocks that were thrown stuff.
Wasn't that worth compensation money?
They had a fork and his grand, his uncle made him and his cousins fill in the five foot deep hole. So they, they blew up and that's back in the day though you could, if you could afford it, you could have it.
Is this the temptation?
Yeah, so is this the temptation and to remind everybody, it's about three minutes after one and so we have a presentation from legal to talk about documents. And I'm going to ask you to please enlighten us.
All right, thank you. I think all of you know me, but I'm Elizabeth Elliott, one of the attorneys out in the city attorney's office. What I'm going to talk about today is records and all of the things that come with it, with records retention, public records requests and legal holds. So I'll try not to take up too much of your time, but if you do have questions at any point, feel free to stop or we can take them up at the end. So the first question during this is deciding what is a record? This is the legal definition out of the statutes. Okay, great. What does that actually mean? It basically means everything you can think of, PDFs, handwritten notes, your calendars, there's a record retention for that. Text messages, emails, your basic letters, correspondence, contract files, policies. Anything that is created in the course of business is a record, even if it's audio, if it's electronic or if it's old school paper and pen. It's all a record. Some of the big questions that we face now with technology are emails, text messages, social media. And so I'll take up each one of those briefly. This is a, an issue that's hitting municipalities, counties and states nationwide. It's thankfully has been hitting kind of the coasts more than here, but it's starting to move in and we're starting to see it here in town as well. The first one is email. Keep in mind, what I try and tell everybody obviously is any email on city email, so you're at Lincoln dot any dot gov. But also your email that you might use for work, that's a Gmail, your personal email account. So if you are using Gmail, Yahoo or anything like that to conduct city business, that is a public record. The case law across the nation is, has been founded basically that says you can't use personal email to try and avoid making it a public record. This is now starting to be commonly known, so we're starting to get public records requests that say any emails on city email or personal email. Again, it's if it is conducting city business. Sometimes that line's a little blurry and what we have to do is we just review each email one by one. We lay eyes on each email and decide is this city business? The, if it's conducted on city email, that's all public record. So any correspondence, friends, family with your city email, even if it's not work related, say it's lunch or a birthday party, that's public record. So keep that in mind as well. Text messages are exactly the same as emails. It's just as if you're writing an email, it's just a different form. And again, this is on city issued devices and personal devices. And so if it's conducting city business, it is a public record, even if it's on your own personal phone. So keep that in mind, we are getting a lot more public records for text messages. Mayor Stothard, a couple of years ago kind of ran into this issue in Omaha where she was using her personal phone. They tried to, they did get a public records request from Omaha World Herald, I believe it was. And Mayor Stothard said, nope, it's my personal phone, I'm not, it's not public record. The Omaha World Herald took their first option and went to the AG's office and said, hey, make or turn it over. AG's office came back and said, if it's conducting city business, it is a public record, even if it's on your personal device. So she was, she did ultimately turn over those text messages that she did have. That has been the ruling across the nation. I'm not aware of any state that has ruled otherwise.
And I said, yes, Elizabeth, didn't she say, oh, but you know, I, I delete my, my text messages every night?
Right. Yes, and that brings me, and I have it, records retention. So, because that's a great question. Records retention is something set out by the state secretary of state. They're the ones that dictate that all government, city, county, state have to retain their records. Text messages fall under the general schedule of correspondence. And you'll see that there are four types of correspondence and each of those four has a different retention period. So if it's the average city business, let's say it is a text message, email or whatever relating to the new shuttle, the, the one that they're testing and it's, hey, let's set up one extra day for free rides. That is a short-term correspondence, or that'd be a medium-term correspondence of two years. That's typical city business. There are short-term correspondence and that's more scheduling meetings. Hey, does everyone have May 5th open? That's six months retention period.
It, it doesn't matter what medium it is, it's, it's pretty much short-term, medium-term.
And then there's long-term and then there's fiscal correspondence. So fiscal correspondence is five years, long-term, that's more major policies. That's eight years unless you're an elected official, then I have to send them over to the state archivist. And she decides whether or not she wants them longer than eight years. So the terms, times that we're looking at is six months, two years, five years, eight years are kind of the different timeframes. It doesn't matter unfortunately, what kind of medium it's on, whether it's a handwritten note, a letter or an email or a text message.
Sure.
Then this actually came up for me, it's not a problem now, but I had an email account that at some point they just said, you have too many emails, we can't receive any more emails until you delete. What can you do?
Yeah, and that's another, the same thing comes up with text messages, because your phone typically doesn't have infinite storage. That's where the difficulty comes in in using these, these devices is that we then have to figure out a way to transport that into another format. Maybe it's saving them all by PDF, downloading them onto your desktop. We have to figure out somehow to save those and transfer them into another medium. Typically it's downloading on your desktop. Old school flip phones, we're doing individual images and things like that, because there's not that way to download it. Our office does have software that can download iPhones, so that's pretty slick, quick and easy. Androids is a different problem, because there's so many different variations, it's much different per device and not as easy. So that, that's the struggle that we really run into. The other problem is the personal versus city. Your city email, no worries about it, because I can just go to IS and get them that way. Because even if you delete them on your, your end user account, IS still has them back to at least, they just got rid of Lotus Notes. So right now they're sitting on about ten years of emails. They're going to start doing an eight-year purge on those, except for elected officials, because under the state statute, I'll have to contact the archivist and see if she wants to peruse and go through those. But for other employees such as myself, eight years, they'll be gone, starting in the next month or so. But I can just go back to them and get all of those emails, even if you think you've deleted them. So city email on city accounts, we're good, we don't have that issue. It's the G-mails, the text messages that really is the struggle. There are softwares out there, they're called EDMs, electronic device management programs that can archive everything. But that is fairly expensive, anywhere from three to $10 per device. And so that's been something budgetary, that's been a little limiting, because it is expensive with this many employees and phones and devices. Because it's not just cell phones, it could be tablets and things like that, so.
Is that a, I'm sorry, is that a per month cost?
It is a per month cost.
And so, are, would you say that if we had something like that individually, that would be the same cost to?
Yes, my understanding on those that they can get, it might be a little closer to the five to 10, just because it's, the volume is lower. But yes, there are services out there. I know Verizon partners with some people that can do some of those things. So maybe if you have certain, I believe AT&T and Sprint do as well, just the city's on Verizon, so that was something we looked into.
So, so my concern, and the reason I ask that is my concern is I also have a law practice with confidential contacts. And so I, because of that, I always purge my text messages. I don't even know if I have any that would be of any interest to anyone, but, but I always purge my text messages in case something should happen to my phone or whatever, except I limit the non-purging to family messages that usually have a long string. So, so would that be something, if, that, if I had a system like that, would I be able to archive things that weren't family oriented and?
There are softwares and systems out there that can do it. The other option you might want to think about is, assuming you have a smartphone, is see how you can just download everything. Review your, your Samsung Galaxies or your iPhones and figure out how to download those. Because there is a way that you can also download your text messages just that way, just down to your computer.
Well, that'd be good to know, because I have clients that'll send me a photo and I literally have to go in and download each one separately.
Yeah, there should be a way that you can, depending on what your type of phone. But that would be something I would encourage everyone who's using any kind of device to really look into that, learn how to do it for your particular phone. And routinely do that, so you have them, and you don't have to worry about a phone crashing or, you know, randomly going through to clean up all of the clutter that's in there, so. But that, that is something that all of, most employees in the city are dealing with, is trying to figure out how to do that. Because the records retention ultimately is on the end users on these devices. And so it, it becomes more work for everyone on this, so.
So how did Mayor Stothard resolve it? What's the end of the story?
They ended up downloading her phone and I believe it was the city attorney's office with her went through and parsed out. Because what happens is we download all of the information. We review each one and say, okay, that one's personal, this one's work, this one's personal, that one's work. And then we produce only what the work, the city business ones are, we don't produce that. Now you do have myself or a paralegal or someone kind of going through your text messages or your emails. But the personal ones, they're not public records, so those aren't going to be produced. But the ones that ultimately are determined to be city business would be produced, whether it's litigation or public records request. So that's ultimately what happened with Mayor Stothard. I couldn't tell you the number they ended up coming up with, but I do know the AG said they had to and they complied with it, so.
And did they change her policy? Her policy was to delete them every night, and so.
The unique individual, the unique circumstances with Omaha is Omaha was exempted from the public rec, or from the records retention schedules back in the seventies. They had some great council or state legislatures. And so they're exempted from every other municipality's records retention policy. So they have their own and I could not tell you what their, Omaha's correspondence retention schedule is. I know they have one, I just couldn't tell you off the top of my head which one that would fall. But as for everybody else, we're subject to this.
You had a question?
It seems like there might be reason in this new landscape of trying to keep all of these things, to have city issued phones for people. I mean, it would be so much easier if you could just, we could hand it to Angie and say, Angie, it's time to do the monthly download or whatever, I mean, and, and then when we're done with the phone, you know, it no longer is us and, you know, you have your personal stuff, it would just be very separate. Are you looking at that? Is the city, I mean, that just?
That's been discussions and here's.
We pay VoIP for seven people and I think I'm the only one that uses, well, I don't know, maybe you guys have phones. Like, it's such a waste.
Yeah, and this has been a discussion that primarily has been left up to the departments based on their budgets. I do know one of the major compliances, a lot of, and I will voice my disagreement with this, but the argument I get is, I hate carrying two or three phones, because, and that, that's, I think, a lot of why departments have not gone that way.
Yes, you make a suggestion that I heard was being discussed at the state, is what they're doing is they're, instead of having an employee carry two phones, they just say, pay $50 a month and you can use the state phone as your personal phone too.
Then that makes it, you're opening more stuff, you've got that concern of making more of your personal stuff public, if that's the concern, if that is something to be aware of.
May not be a concern if you work for Public Works.
Right.
Not likely, if you're working in utilities to get a public records request, you might be comfortable with that. Different departments treated differently. I know LPD, for example, they have some city phones that go to, like if you're a sergeant, you get a phone, a city phone. And then if you move on to a different assignment, that phone stays with whoever replaces you as a sergeant. Public Works has a lot of city issued devices.
I just think of the ti, I don't have time to download stuff, I mean, like, that's awful. We're already part-time with.
Yeah, no, it's.
I would like another solution.
It is very cumbersome and so that's.
It doesn't seem like a very practical way to get people to comply, so if there's another way that we can make compliance easier, I'd be very interested.
As elected officials, I think all you know, you're more in the public eye than, than I am, for example. And so it may make sense from the standpoint of you're looking at, at having a public records request at some point about a hot topic. If you can do that in segregated, I mean, certainly with email, I mean, we would, we've been beating the drum forever. Try to keep it segregated as much as you can, because we don't want to go into your Gmail account.
And, yeah, and so that would be, because elected officials and some of the department heads get a lot of public records requests. You know, it ebbs and flows, election cycles, that type of thing, but you guys are much more likely to get a public records request. So I, I agree, it would be easier if things were just city issued devices. But that's ultimately, I think, for you guys to decide.
Elizabeth, I, yeah, I think you have a presentation and this is a fun, lively discussion, but I also want to make sure that we.
Definitely. One thing I just wanted to mention, social media accounts, the city has a total of 123 social media accounts that I have found so far. It keeps growing. We are one of, a city with a huge amount of social media. And I have finally worked with a vendor to get all of this archived, because this is also correspondence that also has to be maintained under the records retention schedule. So we are now archiving all social media sites for the city. So YouTube, Twitter, Facebook, LinkedIn, Snapchat, all of those, Pinterest, we've got a few Pinterest ones out there. So if you guys do have a social media account that is city business and you do want that, I would encourage you to archive it, let me know and I can get that set up as well. It allows me to search, instead of coming to you saying, hey, search your social media for everything on the shuttle topic. You don't have to scroll through and see, I can do a keyword search and it pulls it up across all city 123 media sites, so just be aware of that. Public records request, FOIA, just wanted to kind of hit a few things, just reminders. The first four hours of production are free. Anything that would take longer than four hours, we can charge from the minute number one after four hours, so keep that in mind. We do have to respond in some way within four business days. Even if it's just to say, hey, it's going to take us two weeks to comply, we have to respond in some way within four business days. We can charge for copies, but it's the actual cost only, we can't give an inflated, this is how much time it would take for someone to stand there and copy type of thing. We are not required to produce the documents in a new or different format. So if they say, yeah, can you put all of your guys' votes in a spreadsheet and work this, we don't have to do that. We can say, this is the format we have it in, you're welcome to do whatever you want with it, so keep that in mind. If you do have questions on public records, on our, the city attorney intralink, we do have a little help menu there, you can scroll through it. It has the statutes, a flow sheet, sample letters, things like that, if you're ever interested in that. And then finally, the other thing where records get us are these legal holds. There is a fairly new administrative regulation, just so you're aware of it, number 40, that talks about legal holds and city employees duties under these. You guys have all probably gotten one of these notices from me and you're like, what the heck, what is this?
That's exactly the words I used.
What happens is once we are aware of a triggering event, we have a duty to issue a legal hold, to make sure that no records that might be relevant to that potential lawsuit are retained and not destroyed in any way. We have to stop all records retention policies for that, those documents and go. So what we did is we have this notice, right here we put a little description of the action to hopefully give you an idea of what does this entail? The parties, the date of event, that kind of thing. Then we have a bunch of stuff that says, this is why you're getting it. And here's a checklist of stuff that we, kind of refreshing your memory, what to check. You are getting a legal hold because someone thinks you have some sort of records. Now, it could be the person who's filed the claim or the lawsuit that says, I talked to council member so-and-so. I sent an email or I did this, that type of thing. That may or may not be true, but because they have indicated you may have records, we will send you one of these. Another one might be, maybe it was an issue that came up on council's agenda at one meeting or someone that showed up at open mic. So they might have written you subsequently or something like that, so we want to just make sure that you don't have anything. So we send this to you and along with the certification. What we're asking is that you guys go through, see if you do have anything. Emails, calendar events, things like that, text messages, letters that they might have sent you. And if you do, to let us know. If you don't, let us know as well. Because why, why we get these is we've had some municipalities across the nation, this one is over in Washington. It's a town of about the size of Carney. They were sued, the fire department was. And the city attorney's office knew that the fire department had records, but they didn't realize the city clerk and the city police department also had records. They didn't do a legal hold notice to their departments and ultimately records were destroyed. They were fined, I want to say, yeah, they were fined only $10,000, but what we're seeing in the case law is that judges are making fines comparable to like the size of the city, the money that the city has. So if this was Lincoln, I would expect a much higher fine for something like that. Another one that hit closer to home a few years ago was one that hit the Board of Regents. This was a lawsuit, had Klein Williams, Frazier Strikers in DC and Chicago firms there. And what they did wrong was they didn't put a legal hold or a litigation hold in place. They didn't get any directives from counsel about what was required, on what they should have preserved or why. And just simply saying, hey, we're getting sued is not enough. Finally, the staff didn't provide counsel assurances that they had everything and that they did produce everything. So ultimately, the university was sanctioned. They were required to pay all expenses to re-depose everybody. And so when you have three defendants and major law firms across the nation, the bills run up high. And so that ultimately was a pretty pricey mistake that happened. We don't want this to happen here, so we are kind of doing as best we can now, training, sending out these legal hold notices and everything. But we need your guys' help, along with all the other departments that get these, to really double check when you do get these, see if you do have anything. And if you do or you don't, sign that certification saying, hey, I don't have anything or this is what I did, and send it back to me. That way we can say, hey, we did reasonable efforts, we did everything we could. And we're protect, we're in a better defensive position that way, should that ever happen, so.
That's appropriate time, counsel.
You recently sent us a legal hold notice.
Yes.
And it was about an individual who had actually come and had a pre-counsel with us.
Yes.
What does that mean for that, that pre-counsel was recorded, correct?
Right, so what I will do with that is I will pull and get that, because we do have the, the video, audio, along with any other documents, if it was at council meeting, the minutes, that sort of thing. So I will independently go pull those, typically I contact Station Five and they give me a thumb drive, that kind of thing.
Is there anything else you need from us?
If there's anything.
Is it correspondence that you're talking about? Like, I took notes during that.
That would be it, yep. Notes, correspondence, and if you have maybe audio or something, that type of thing. I don't think that you would, but those would be.
Doesn't mean we want it, we want you to keep it.
Yep, but just save it.
Another example, from, we're mostly on, off of paper, but in the past, I've kept notes during meetings on the agenda that I have in front of me. Is that required to be maintained?
Yes, it is.
I mean, since I've been on the council, if the meeting's over, I just kept that one.
What if it's a doodle?
Doodles, yes, I doodle.
If it's just doodles, you can do that. If it's something that you write out, but then you convert and add it to a PDF document, you can get rid of those notes and shred those.
What if I pass Benny a note that says, I have to use the restroom, can we take a five-minute break?
You better keep it.
Seriously?
Yeah.
All right, Benny.
You're going to come up with a better code?
We just have a code now.
To the best of my knowledge, I don't know where that note is.
Yes, but from now on.
Because I've done that, like a scrap this day, I really wouldn't.
I appreciate it, sent them.
Those are correspondence and you'd have to keep it, I would say that's a short term, so, six months.
That's a long time to hold it.
A number that wouldn't expire.
I get phone calls, frequent phone calls. Late at night, early in the morning. Fills up my voice machine in my day job.
Right.
And, I mean, there might be four or five a week. This has been going on for years.
Good question.
I don't even really listen to them oftentimes, I hear who it is and delete.
And I've had lengthy conversation with secretary of state staff about voicemails, because one, we don't have the storage space to save audio files. On the VoIP phones, we can save the audio files, but that would take up a tremendous amount of space. What they have said is acceptable is to keep a log of those voice messages, whether it's typed out or handwritten, and then keep that log.
Just say this is a voice to our staff on this day.
Just not, not a transcript of the conversation, just a log of the conversation.
Yep, just John Doe.
Because the same person does the same thing to my audiology practice. And I'll go in, well, on Monday especially, but sometimes any other day of the week, and find my entire inbox is filled with four to five, 10-minute messages. and find my entire inbox is filled with four to five, ten-minute messages each.
Yeah, I would just say five calls by John Doe on this date. And that should be sufficient. I've had that conversation with Secretary of State in writing, so I think we're okay, should they ever question that.
Are there other questions?
If there are, as you sit back and you're like, is she serious? Call, email, you know, I'd be happy to chat and we can figure out, how long do we have to keep this?
And just so you know, this is a presentation that was prepared and presented to all departments in the city.
Yes.
Well, I don't think we're getting picked on.
No, no.
No, but, but, but it is important, that's why we wanted to reach out to everybody. And then the next thing will be, we'll probably reschedule in a couple of years because we have new employees and we just want to reemphasize on a periodic basis how important this is.
And I've been trying just to-
Thanks for the little compliment.
And I've been trying-
The city has new employees.
And I will occasionally, I think I have each of you, um, included, but I, every three or four months, I'm sending out kind of a records email, just three different ti- tips on things to think about. Uh, one thing I will tell you, um, is calendars are two-year records retention. So for those of you who keep hard calendars, uh, make sure you're keeping those for two years, so.
What do you say, hard calendars?
Paper calendars, yeah, I know there's a few people. Few people that keep paper.
Okay.
I have one additional question, I'm not sure, first off, does anyone else have any? When you get a FOIA request and you have to dive into my text messages, my Gmail account, my Hotmail account, my Yahoo account, and my CD account, and you're allowed to charge for that research?
The first four hours, no. After the four hours, then yes, we can.
Yeah, can you, what is the average cost? I assume the person making the request has to pay that?
Yes, and typically what happens, it depends on who's going through it. We go with, how we've done it is go on that person's, um, hourly rate that's set by personnel. That is council members, that is your council rate, not what you would charge in your personal business or anything like that. That is your council rate that personnel has calculated up. Um, and so we take that times however many hours. So what we do is we get a request and we say, oh, we think this is gonna take about eight hours. So we respond to the individual and say, we estimate that this will take about eight hours and kind of give an explanation why. Um, the first four hours are free, however, the second four hours are gonna cost you X amount of money. And, uh, I would say more often than not, when they hear money's involved, they go away. That's a little different with you guys because of elections, sometimes people are a little more invested and might be a little more willing to pay. But on our average public records request of purchasing or city clerk's office, they usually tend to go away after that.
Or they, they shorten it.
Yes.
Or adjust it. For example, we've got one now where we sent back and said, this will cost about five grand because you didn't put a timeframe. So we, we put in the search terms, NIS spends how much time they spend going back ten years, searching everywhere for those search terms. Well, it involved an issue that was a fairly short timeframe, maybe five, six months. So it would be easy enough to shorten it up, to define the timeframe and go from five thousand to maybe five hundred. So that happens as well.
Yeah.
That was my question. Other questions? Just thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, we don't want to claim ignorance.
Rants.
Well, you know, when I, when we, when I first started getting emails, and I would get emails to my personal email from anything to the city, I would just call or say, or send something back, I don't receive my emails at this address. So because of that, very thing, I think it's just easier. I have like a hundred and fifty-five thousand emails in my office.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that I got a great definition on fiscal correspondence versus long-term policies. I get short-term con- I understand what you're saying.
The, the medium term is just kind of, what I would say is ninety percent of your email or ninety percent of your correspondence. It's just your daily, um, constituent conversations, um, issue-related. If it is related to budget or anything around that, it's gonna fall under, it could be both. Um, general budget conversations, probably five years. The final budget that's approved and you're discussing that final budget, that would probably be eight years long-term because that's a major policy-type issue. Other major policies could be developing something like the, the, the JPA for downtown Haymarket type stuff. That would be another major type thing. CIP discussions would be that eight-year long-term. CIP could potentially on the smaller stuff fall under the five-year fiscal. It, it would just decide, how big is it? Is it one of, just a minor issue on it, or is it the overall CIP-type project? So it, it really is gonna come down to email by email or text by text, what, where it actually falls. If we think it falls into two, I will pick the latter, the one with the longest retention to maintain. Cause the records retention policies are, um, based on state law, uh, statute of limitations for any type of lawsuit that we might face for that, and then the Secretary of State rules. So we pick the longer out of all of those, and that's how we came up. If you do want to see the whole city of Lincoln's retention schedule, the easiest way to do it is go to the Secretary of State. There's actually, we worked with the Secretary the last year and had a city of Lincoln retention schedule because we were all lumped in all of the cities and counties, which what happens in Eddieville, Nebraska is not what happens here. So I talked the Secretary of State into letting us separate and have our own, so we have more control over it. Um, and so it's Secretary of State, the retention schedules, and it'll be city of Lincoln. And you'll see it there. And it'll list out everything. If you have a question, hey, what is Working Papers retention schedule? I can, you can do a Ctrl, Alt, F and find it that way, a Ctrl, F and find it.
And after redo it, now.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I did not bring my pre-counsel list, I think we're good until two, right?
Right.